Okay, we will. We'll call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for September 4th, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Menucha.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the September 4th, 2012 special public meeting of the city council is posted on Thursday, August 30th, 2012, on outside City Hall.
Next.
You have one item only before you. It's Director of Community Development regarding retention of new market tax credit advisory services to explore potential alternative funding sources for the central library rehabilitation project. One A is motion approving a consulting agreement with Low Enterprises Real Estate Group to act as city's new market tax credit consultant.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. The council has long maintained that we, as staff, should be looking for every opportunity to bring value to the city, and especially in the wake of the loss of redevelopment, this directive is increasingly important. What we have before you today is an admittedly exotic, or at least exotic sounding, type of construct that would allow the city of Glendale to utilize new market tax credits for our central library project. I assure you that everything you are about to hear, as convoluted and complex as it sounds, is fully vetted through the IRS tax codes. And it's, I hate to make it sound so complicated, however, as you'll see in the presentation, and as we will endeavor to answer your questions, nothing that the IRS does is simple. And thus, Mr. Lands of Fame will provide you a brief presentation as to how this whole structure works.
Bill.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have before you a copy of the PowerPoint. I also had emailed it to you, for those of you that would like to see it digitally. But you've got what we're going to present here today. As Mr. Ochoa said, with the dissolution of redevelopment, we've started looking for other tools to accomplish the same goals to improve the community. Some tools we expect to be created in the coming months. Others are older tools that have been around for a while, and they're getting a new look. You recently adopted a community benefits district. In this case, we're looking at new market tax credits as a potential source of funding, to augment the funding we have for the central library. The program was created by Congress in 2000. It provides credits to those that invest in areas that are lower income. Typically, it's $3 to $5 billion is allocated annually. This is intended to augment traditional financing sources and funding sources. In our cases, you'll see later, we're looking at tax-exempt bonds. City of Glendale does have some experience with new market tax credits. If you'll remember, this was part of the Dorn Gardens financing. We combined it with several other sources, home funds and redevelopment set-aside funds. The use, again, was, this is an incentive program by the federal government to create jobs and provide benefit to areas of lower economic status. Typically, they're to finance, they're in these three areas, financing small business, to improve community facilities and other buildings that are used by the community, and then increase homeownership. And that's where our Dorn Gardens had come in. Doing a little research on new market tax credits, since 2001, it was created in 2000, December, the first distribution was in 2001, there have been 644 different awards, about $33 billion. We have looked, there is a coalition, New Market Tax Credit Coalition, just put out a report on 50 projects in 50 states. We know that there's a project in every state of the union, a new market tax credit project. Again, areas that these, we found them to be real estate and business. In the real estate end, education, healthcare, community centers, cultural rehabs. In business, a lot in energy and agriculture, manufacturing, industrial. As I said, they are authorized in the tax code. It is, Mr. Menucha, you had asked me for the full code. It is USC Title 26, Section 45D.
Only?
And...
Sure.
Ignore. Congress authorizes the distributions, and then they are administered by the Community Development Financial Institutions Fund. This is a branch of the U.S. Treasury. They look at the different applications for tax credits and then make decisions based on those applications that are submitted. Unlike our state tax, there really is no interaction between those that are proposing and the decision-makers at the CDFI. They merely announce the award, and then those tax credits are put to use. It is a series, new market tax credits, the way that we certainly envision it for the library. It's a series of transactions to finance ownership and construction. Ultimately, when the project ends, in seven years, that's the amount of time over which the tax credits are taken, the ownership returns back to the city. The investment that is made in these new market tax credits is what is used to build the project. In your staff reports, you have a diagram that is very confusing and complicated. And in my attempt to try and simplify it, I'm not sure that I succeeded, but...
It's much better, Bill.
Let's see if we can try. New market tax credits, there are two, they're called tranches, but two loan areas that happen, A-side and B-side. Let me start with the B-side first, because I think it's the easier to explain. The new market tax credits get issued by Congress. Investors invest in those tax credits. They then form an investment company. That company loans those funds to what's called a community development entity. This is something that is created by the IRS code. That community development entity then makes a loan to what's called a QualicB, Qualified Active Low-Income Business. This is a nonprofit whose sole assets are to own the project and to operate, and to build and operate, or I should say, to lease. This QualicB is an entity that is put together by the city council. It is suggested, council members could be a part of that board. It is suggested that you not be a majority, but if you had a five-member panel, you could have two representatives from the city council. This is the entity that owns, that would ultimately own the building and be there for the tax credits to be effective. From the QualicB would use the funds that they get to build the project here. Now, on the A-side, this is, COG is the city of Glendale. This is a little bit, where it becomes a little bit more exotic, as Mr. Ochoa had introduced. Starting at the top, the city of Glendale would loan the investment group, which would then in turn loan to the CDE and the QualicB, funds to purchase the building, in our case, the library. The QualicB would then own the library. They would have a $20 million, let's say it's $20 million. They have a $20 million loan from the city of Glendale. The next day, they would purchase that building from the city of Glendale, and those funds would be returned, the $20 million. But you still have a $20 million loan outstanding. QualicB would then lease the building that it now owns, because it just bought it, to the library, and the library would make lease payments, let's say of $250,000 a year, making that number up. Library would lease the building from the QualicB for $250,000, which would be the same amount as the debt service to the city of Glendale. So, you may have amounts of money out for a day, but they would all come back in this structure. The QualicB would hold the asset, in this case, the library, for seven years while the investors collected. There's, you can collect a certain percentage for each of the seven years. At the end of the seven years, that whole structure gets collapsed. The loan is satisfied by returning the building to the city of Glendale. We have looked at, we talked to, we tried to get some experience and find out what others have learned from new market tax credits. We talked to a smaller city, Desert Hot Springs. They were doing a health and wellness community center. We talked to a larger entity, the Anderson-Munger YMCA in the city of Los Angeles. They actually got their tax credits from the city of Los Angeles's community development entity. And then we talked to somebody in South Carolina, in Spartanburg, the city manager there, so we got an East Coast perspective. They have done three projects, a parking garage, an airport expansion, and then a community center. Some themes that we heard from all three of them, and in some of the reading that we've done and research that we've done, it's better to have fewer funding sources than more. Every funding source will affect that structure that you have to put together. So, the more funding sources you have, the more allowances, not allowances, but accommodations you need to make in that funding structure. In our case, we're looking to leverage new market tax credits with our bond funds. Experienced legal counsel is key for this. There are firms in Southern California that do a lot of this work, and because of the nature and the complexity of the transactions, it is important to have somebody who's experienced and not learning as we go. Dedicate staff with decision-making authority. Because this moves, and it's very fluid, it moves very quickly, you want to have high-ranking staff that's assigned and associated with the project. They all said that it's time-consuming, but worthwhile, because through this structure, we are getting tax credits, we are getting dollars invested in our project. And then, finally, there is a growing acceptance of new market tax credits as a viable funding source, which means there's more competition for it than in the past. How do we, how would we use them with our library? Well, we identified tax-exempt bonds to do our library, very preliminary estimate of $10 million. We would either, should those estimates come in higher, we want to have a funding source, or if they hold at $10 million, we'd like to have additional funds to put in other community projects. The library has completed their visioning process with the community and the city council. In fact, the council had authorized them to begin the design of this. We had done an RFP and actually awarded to a company, Gruen, but with the dissolution of redevelopment, we put that on hold. We're now ready to resurrect it. There's some timing issues with the project and the new market tax credits. The way that they work is you need what's called a guaranteed maximum price, right around the time that Congress is distributing those funds. That's March 1st. In order to make that date and have a bid back that says, this is what the maximum price is for the project, we would need to do a modified design-build. In that, we would do schematic design and have you approve that. We would send that out to contractors for design-build price. We would then have them bid out each of the subs, and we would fit all of that within our guaranteed maximum price. Again, to do that, we need to start immediately. So, what we're proposing is to utilize some CIP funds that were set aside for the library to begin that, and then reimburse with our bonds. We think those bonds become authorized in the spring of 2013 through the dissolution process. Some things to consider, the city would need to make the loan and sell the building to this QualicB. Again, you would have an interest in the QualicB. We want to make sure that the makeup of that group was, had the same and shared the same vision that you did. The complexity of the structure alone, Mr. Garcia worked on the Dorn Gardens and can tell you that there are a lot of different things that have to be put in place for all of this to work properly. The timing, as I just mentioned, we would have to do a modified design process. Our Public Works Engineering Department is comfortable with it and believes that it can be done within that time. And then, finally, for financing, these expenses, the expenses for the financing are paid out of proceeds. So, there's no out-of-pocket for the city, much like a bond issue. You would pay for those services out of proceeds. At some point down the line, we may have to put up a deposit for some fees for services, but if we go forward with the financing, those two get paid out of proceeds.
How much?
It's $25,000, I think, is the deposit. The other would be an appraisal. The appraisal will run, we're getting a proposal now, would be anywhere, my guess is about $15,000 for that size. Today's action that we're asking for you is to seek approval to retain an advisor. The advisor is important to this. Again, I can't emphasize the complexity of the structure that we go through. While we do have legal staff that has been through this, we don't do this on an everyday basis, so it's important for us to have an experienced consultant that, number one, can help us to determine eligibility of our project and make sure it's eligible for the tax credits, to secure the allocation from other CDEs for the project, and then to help structure that financing. The action that we're asking for today does not approve the financing. We're going to take this in steps, but we would like to have, retain the advisor. Again, the advisor is working on the basis that they get paid if this financing happens. In terms of the group that we're suggesting, Low Enterprises Real Estate Group, we did, we looked at some referrals and found that they are knowledgeable. In fact, they are designated by the CDFI as a community development entity. So, they are eligible to receive tax credits for projects like this. So, they act in a dual capacity. The people, the two projects we spoke to said that they were reliable. They were always there and made the timelines that they always said. They were always accessible, and I've found that as well. Representing the company is Liliana Moynhay here, and again, been very accessible to us. The variety of projects that they've done, they range from medical office, education, community centers. They've done a cultural rehab down in San Diego with the old military training center. And so, staff, for these reasons, staff is recommending approval of Low Enterprises for advisory services. That completes our presentation, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Mr. Weaver.
The word that we're concerned about is the word maximum, maximum cost. So, you're going out to a design review company to do a modified design?
I'm building.
... How do you communicate to make sure that they're going to give us the maximum amount? In other words, if they wanted to, usually, we're going out to get the lowest bid to design and build. In this case, we want to make sure we're covered. So, how do they come up with the maximum?
The maximum price, guaranteed price, is really a new market tax credit term. What they really want to know is, what's your contract price? So, what's the most that this is going to cost you?
Okay.
That would be the contract price on a design build.
How do they come up with? I'm used to the opposite, that low bid, what we take. Here, you don't necessarily want the low bid, because what if it costs more, you know, than when they come out with?
And that really is the basis...
Change orders or other things that could drive up the cost.
And that's really the basis of a design-build style of bidding, to have that risk shared with the developers or the builder, so that everyone knows what it is that they're getting into, as opposed to lowest responsible bid, which is the way cities generally, customarily do their public works projects. And using a design build or a modified even design build, similar to what we would do with a multi-prime contract. We want to have the folks that are designing it, also they're responsible for the building and contracting of it, so that they have a very good understanding about what it is. A lot of times when you see that the cost overruns and change orders is when there's a disconnect between the folks that are designing the building and the folks that are building the building.
I understand all that. Just what if, between the walls or something, they run into things that drive the cost. Do we have to eat that cost?
As the owner of the project, either you would eat the cost or value engineer the cost away. So, let's say that the project actually cost us $10 million is the design-build estimate. Well, as, if we were fortunate enough to receive several million dollars in new market tax credits, the city would have the option of either backing out some of the city bond proceeds to use those projects and other qualified funds, or to expand the scope of the project, which is, you know, on a design build, you'd have alternate bids for additional projects or additional features. But you would have that level of flexibility. But the thing that, for the purposes of the new market tax credit program, you want to know what the outside number is. So, let's say that it's $12 million, but the council has a vision for a $16 million building. We would be very leery about putting that $16 million out if we had a budget of 10 and we were able to obtain $6 million in tax credits.
So, we say the maximum's $12 million. There's no chance it's going to come in more than $12 million for the design review.
Only to the extent that we want it to come in higher.
Okay. On us, okay.
So, LEREG, they're the consultant that you're recommending hiring. Are they also the design-build firm, or would that be another firm?
That would be another firm.
Okay, so there would be, that would, we would, that would be for us to make that decision?
Correct. And you would do that through your normal bidding process.
Okay. Okay, so just, you know, I know that you're aware of this, but this being a historic structure, we need to be very, I think the criteria doesn't become just cost at that point. We have to have a criteria of historic sensitivity and experience with historic renovations would be the primary, I think, qualification for whatever firm was hired. And is there any, what's the worst that could happen? What could go wrong with this whole scheme, besides us paying some consulting money and it not happening? You know, that I understand is a calculated risk, but beyond that, once we, if we decided to go forward with this, what's, is there a worst-case scenario?
I'm hard-pressed to find one. What I would recommend you do is wait till you secure the tax credits before you enter into the contract, or right around the same time, you know that you're going to get the tax credits. I suppose the, where this could go is at the very end, if the QualicB, that entity that you put together goes rogue, and they say, you know what, we're not going to give it back, you would then have to take some kind of legal action to actually foreclose on your loan, to get the building back. But again, I don't foresee that happening. We asked those questions of the three, and admittedly, we were trying to do this in a holiday week, and they did not have any of those issues arise.
To the extent that that QualicB is a construct of the city council, we're hard-pressed to imagine that they would go rogue, but truly, that was the one thing we kept coming back to, is if two members of the city council and two members of the library commission or the arts, library arts and culture, and a staff person, and somehow they decided to do something wholesale, different from what you, as council, wanted. I suppose that's possible. It's not likely.
Thank you.
Mr. Jay.
Thanks for the briefing on this, because it helped me understand this. But I have a couple other questions. The, at the point of sale, when we sell the library to the QualicB, does that have to be an open bidding process, the way we sell any other city property, like our lots we're going to have this evening for sale?
You know, you had asked me that question last week, and unfortunately, Ms. Van Miden is going to have to answer for me, and I kind of put her on the spot with short notice, but...
Sure. Members of the city council, we've been thinking about that as well, and our code has provisions that allow some exceptions from the sale with competitive bidding. And one of those is where it's a structured exchange. And so, we're looking at that a little bit more closely to determine whether or not we think that the structure of this transaction is susceptible to be interpreted within what the code provision says as a property exchange, or exchange of value, or exchange of an interest. So, while, as it, preliminarily, it looks like we can do that and fit that within an exception to that public bidding component. But, you know, we're drilling down on that a little bit further. We want to be completely comfortable that it fits within that. And if not, we may need to look at potentially amending the code to allow for more flexibility with respect to these sorts of transactions, should the council be interested in pursuing them in the future.
Yeah, I would agree, Councilman Najarian, that this is such a unique structure with so many securities in place, that if it doesn't fit within the one exception that Ms. Van Miden just said, it might, in my view, it's justifiable to amend the code if we need to fit it within this type of transaction.
But in the realm of worst-case scenario, we simply wouldn't sell the building and cancel the transaction, not take the tax credits and not put the library at risk.
The other question I have is, upon the sale to the QualicB, would there not be some tax liability, some property tax liability at that point? I mean, what would the QualicB, would it be a governmental agency?
I think it's structured as a nonprofit, so would not have property tax liability.
Okay, so it would be a library, a 501(c)(3) type...
Affordable housing tax credit transactions, those are all sold to an LLC that's controlled by a nonprofit, where the nonprofit is the managing member, and they don't have property tax liability for that reason. It's similar, similar concept.
Mr. Weaver.
A follow-up on Laura asked. This is a historic structure, so it may be an exception. If we were to use this in the future with other structures that are not historic, are we caught, I mean, should we be amending the code in some way?
Well, I would just say, Mr. Weaver, it's a little premature, because we don't have other types of transactions. We're going to, you know, this is just the very first step in the process to retain the consultant. When we come back and we have to actually work out the mechanics of the transaction, we will address all these issues.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if we start down the road, and the next one comes along, and all of a sudden, we amend the code so we can do it, somebody say, oh, okay, look what the city's doing. They're amending their code so they get by, not competitive advertising or whatever.
I think to the city attorney's point, we would be looking at any kind of amendment being focused around the use of tax credits specifically, which would limit that universe of potential participants to other governmental agencies.
Okay.
And their nonprofit subsidiaries.
Okay.
I've heard about the tax credits for years, but how long has it been around? Does anyone know? It's been five, eight, 10?
This version of the program since 2000.
Since 2000?
Yes, sir.
And do we know how many projects have been built in California using this?
California, I don't know.
I'd like to find out. I mean, just a ballpark figure. Is it 15, or is it 50, or...
We'll look into it.
Okay, I'd like to know. And then, finally, if everything goes according to plan, and let's use the $16 million number, everything goes according to plan, and there's no construction issues, everything is perfect until the end of construction, how much is this going to ultimately cost the city of Glendale? Do we have any projection, because I'd like to know that number, too?
Ultimately, we would have no out-of-pocket expense. They would be paid through, through the proceeds. In the example that we looked at, there's probably $3 million in investment return fees, and then fees for the consultants. So, you start out with about $11 million, maybe four. You would wind up at the end with about seven and a half. Some of that is to prepay interest on that second loan, that B loan, and all of your administrative costs. So, when you ask the question, how much would it cost, there's no out-of-pocket. If we didn't do the deal, we wouldn't have any cost. If we do the financing, it's all paid out of proceeds, and my guess is that's about three and a half or four million dollars. three and a half or four million dollars.
Another question just popped in my mind. So, if we go through this form, then this process, does the library staff cease to be our library staff and become Qualic B staff?
No.
Why?
Because we'd be leasing that building for the operation of our library.
Or we're just a tenant.
Tenant in our own building, essentially.
Okay, any other questions? So, this is, so the public knows to me clear, this is just a vote to hire a consultant. I have a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Jarien?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
Next?
Move to adjourn.